Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, June 11th, 2024 Tingsboro Public Schools School Committee Meeting. My name is Dr. Flanagan, I'm Superintendent of Schools, and this is our annual reorganization meeting. So before we get into any part of the agenda, I would like to turn this over as soon as possible. That being said, if we have a nomination for a chair at this time.
Dr. Flanagan, I'd like to nominate Tony Tenerella as Chair of the School Committee for this year.
We have a chair, we have a nomination?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All right. Seeing no discussion, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of Mr. Tenerella serving as the Chair, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Congratulations, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Thank you to my members for nominating me and choosing me, I appreciate that. At this time, I will do introductions of our new members. Stacy Gallo was elected and Mr. Bert Bushman was appointed by a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen. Thank you to all the residents of Tingsboro for re-electing myself and Mr. Mullen. We greatly appreciate that and for voting for Stacy. Bert, thank you for stepping up to fill the empty chair for the one seat from our past member, Mr. Bell. We appreciate that. There was also a couple other community members that put in papers as well, so I'd like to thank them for being willing to stand up and serve on this committee for the elections next year. Mr. Bushman, just for the people at home, has actually served on this committee for nine years in the past, has been working with public schools for, you know, a couple years anyway, and currently is seated on the middle school building committee, which he's served on for the last two and a half, almost three years through this project. So, thank you very much for stepping up and being willing to fill this empty chair.
Thank you for appointing me.
At this time, we'll actually start with introductions.
Evan Cody, student representative.
Bert Bushman.
Becky Stanton.
Joan Masina, school business administrator.
Mike Flanagan, superintendent.
Danielle Athanas.
Ryan McMahon.
Stacy Gallo.
Rob Mullen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. At this time, I will seek a motion for a nominee for the Vice Chair.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Danielle Athanas for this year.
I'll second.
Any other nominations? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? That carries 7-0-0. Thank you, Danielle.
Thank you.
For being willing.
Ready?
At this time, I will seek a nomination for the Recording Secretary position.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Ryan McMahon, please.
And I'll second.
Any other nominations?
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? That carries 7-0-0. Review of the open minute, open meeting law, and email telephone correspondence, as well as the executive session guidelines, rules of the school committee, which, for the new members, I want you to read them all, but that's an important one, too, is it outlines our responsibilities as a committee and what we're actually responsible for here. All those guidelines are in your drive, so please take a look at them. If you have any questions or anything, please contact me or any other member that's been here for a while, and we can help you through that. Preliminary discussion of school committee subcommittees.
So, Mr. Chair, if I can jump in on this one. In their drive, you'll also find a list of various subcommittees that meet throughout the school year. Some of them are a bigger lift and more time-consuming than others. Some of them are standing committees right now with the negotiation committee that will just carry over as we are currently in that. We do need to appoint a new member tonight, and I apologize, I'm not sure that that made the agenda, but that's an action that we absolutely need to take tonight regardless. So, we will bring that up under New Business when we get to item 10C. After 10C, Mr. Whitson's will do it, 10D. That being said, if every committee member could, just kind of read the synopsis of what each subcommittee is and send me an email with your top two or three choices, and you can kind of specify, you know, this is absolutely my priority, I want nothing to do with this committee, whatever it is, and basically what I do is I'll take that list and try to put it together, a subcommittee group that will come back on and officially vote at our first meeting in August, and that'll be the subcommittee list for the entire school year. So if you can get that to me within the next week or two, that would be great, and we'll have that for our August meeting.
Perfect. Moving on to approval of minutes, I'm going to break these out for school committee and executive session, two motions. So, obviously, you get a motion to approve the May 14th, 2024 school committee minutes, the May 22nd, 2024 superintendent evaluation subcommittee minutes, the June 3rd, 2024 superintendent evaluation subcommittee minutes, and the June 3rd school committee meeting minutes.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? That carries one extension. That carries 6-0-1. The second will be the May 14th, 2024 executive session minutes, the May 28th executive session minutes, the May 29th negotiation subcommittee executive session minutes, and I believe I have them all.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Two abstentions. 5-0-2. And thank you all for that. Citizens' time. Seeing none. Correspondence.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In your drive tonight, you'll find a memo from Town Technology Director Tom LaFlem. Actually, Mr. Mullen, you asked me about this project not too long ago, about a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, but I'm pleased to say that the Town of Tingsboro has received a state grant to actually connect fiber optics to all the town buildings in the community. So, we know it's a significant cost that goes with that, so I applaud the efforts of Mr. LaFlem and the town for seeking this grant to make this possible. So, this will certainly smooth out some of our payroll issues where the school will be connected to Town Hall and likewise. So, it brings municipal buildings together, keeps us on one network, and it's a great project for the town. So, Tom is working with Derek Piper on this, and we're excited about this project going forward. I will keep you updated as we know more and as the timelines start to hit.
Is that only for the elementary school, or will that be brought across the bridge?
Right across the bridge.
Beautiful.
I've seen that.
Awesome. Thank you for that update. Personnel, and I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Flanagan, because there's a bunch of names that I butcher.
Okay. So I'm just going to go right through it. Notification resignations from Section A. Jennifer Farmping, TES. Chris Pollitt, TMS. Michelle Riley, TMS. Stephen Stanley, TES. Information only for those. Like to thank those four employees for their committed service over the years. Section B, we have notification new hires. We have Ben Algar, who will be a TV media teacher at TMS THS. We have Sidney Fergunas, who will be district-wide EL teacher. Ashley Pellegrin, who is TES kindergarten teacher, she's currently paraprofessional there now. And Emma Lynch will be joining us from another district, she's a TES special education teacher. So, welcome to those four employees. Mr. Chair, we also have some staff that are attaining professional status. So essentially, that is, I had the autonomy after a year of gainful employment with proficient reviews to provide professional status to employees in the district. Typically, we wait for three consecutive years without a break in service to award professional status. So Kat Cooney, Jenna Durkin, Kyrie Jones, and Jason Stewart fit that category, so we're going to award them professional status. Stacy Aleka is a different situation. Stacy Aleka was a valued employee in this community for eight years, left us and recently came back this past year. So, where she did have professional status, we want to give her back that professional status. Phenomenal math teacher at the high school. So, those are our employees attaining professional status, so congratulations to those five employees. And these employees will be renewed, but they do not have three consecutive years of uninterrupted service. Nicole Barnard, Holly Connolly, Dan Costigan, Vander Foster, Laura Francis, Erica Guerrier, Evan Hermanson, Hannah McDonald, Michaela Merksimer, Taylor Morash, Vinnie Papa Giorgio, Kyle Pratt, Erin Ribito, Cassidy Rand, Sam Roy, Bethany Shudo, Jessica Shepherd, and Jenna Shields. They'll all be coming back next year with us. So congratulations to them, they did a great job for us this year. And the last notification of personnel, Katie Leahy will be reassigned from grade eight to our literacy coach, K-8. As you know, that was a position that's been at the forefront of our budget discussions for probably the past four or five years. Now that we have a new literacy program, we know that this is time to do that. We are going to miss Katie in the classroom, but she's a phenomenal educator, and we know that she brings so much to the district, and she'll be able to help teachers in a different way, so that's exciting. So those are our personnel actions for tonight.
Excellent, and thank you for reading those names.
No problem.
Appreciate it. Share the success. Evan.
Sure. Thank you. At TES, as we wind down the 2023 to 2024 school year, we are beyond proud of the social, emotional, and academic progress our students made this year. Over the last week, we had many fun, exciting events. Today, TES celebrated our fifth grade students at the moving on celebration. Congratulations to our students and families. Our end of the year celebration in BBQ was a blast. Our annual field day was epic, a truly amazing day filled with fun, laughter, and smiles. A huge stripes shout-out to all of our parent volunteers and Ms. Shepherd, our P.E.A. teacher, for making the day run so smoothly. Thank you to our families for another great year. At TMS, on May 31st, several staff members and students from TMS visited TES to share their experiences and understandings of the middle school with the fifth graders. We had a great step-up day on Tuesday, June 4th, with the fifth graders as well. The eighth grade just completed its fourth set of MCAS tests with the civics pilot. This week, we have the end of the year eighth grade dance on Tuesday, June 11th, moving on ceremony on June 12th, and field day on June 13th. Our staff has spent a great deal of time pulling grades together at the same time as cleaning their rooms as they prepare to move into the new building next year. At THS, congratulations to the class of 2024. They had a great senior week that culminated with graduation last Friday night. We wish you the best as you move on to what is next. Freshmen recently completed the MCAS biology exam, and results will be available this fall. Congratulations to Tingsboro Theater, as they took home multiple TAMI awards, including Best House Experience, Best Stage Group, Small School Division, Silver Award for Best Performance in a Featured Role, that was Natalie Landsteiner, and Not Your Average Chorus Member Award, that was Dorothy Daughter. Spring sports had a successful season with softball, baseball, girls lacrosse, boys lacrosse, girls tennis, and track and field all qualified for postseason play. Softball won 4-1 with Kylie Hogan pitching a no-hitter. They will be playing in the Final Four on Wednesday at 4:00 against Pittsfield for a spot in the state finals. The game will be played at Worcester State.
Awesome. Great job. Good job. Who's Bari? Too soon? Poor Bari. We have no subcommittees.
Correct.
To discuss unfinished business.
So we'll just jump right to the slide deck now, Mr. Chair. Just a reminder about the upcoming meetings we have. You can see them on your screen. Negotiations next Monday night, then we have school building committee on the 26th, that's a combination of the June and July school building committee meetings, and then we come back August 6th for our next school committee meeting. So continue with the MSBA update. Not much to update, you know, we all just took a tour of the middle school, and it looks fantastic, the progress is amazing, it's great to see. Drywall's there, I think you said painting is starting tomorrow in the second floor of Building A, and they'll prime it and paint it and come back and do a final coat later on. So it's just amazing how systemic their approach is, and I think one of the things we heard today from Steve Sanderson was that there are over 100 employees on the site every single day, and the work is ongoing and they're doing a great job. So, I don't know if any committee members want to share any of their experiences from the tour we just came on at this time, but we can just leave that for the update.
I think the progress is phenomenal. I don't remember the last time we were there, I think it was earlier in the year, and they hadn't.
Not all the floors were poured yet, and it was wide open, there was no classroom, so it was just kind of big, open spaces. Now seeing the actual classrooms divided out and getting a sense of what our students got to experience, it's completely different, it's really impressive, they're doing an amazing job, so I'm really excited for our students when this building finally opens.
Awesome.
Dan, I just want to share for the community, the way that the construction crew is very cognizant that this is a occupied campus with students, there's signs all over the place, you know, students around, no swearing, you know, and other student-appropriate signage, safe workplace signs, that was really impressive, and the building just looks amazing, and we can't thank the community enough for providing our students this opportunity.
I also noticed what Becky just said, but I want to add to that, how Steve was commenting that they are bringing the students in and like teaching them about like the things that they're doing and like holding them like, hey, like, we needed to have 250 yards of concrete, and it came in in 10 trucks, how much did each truck hold, like, or whatever, like, you know, the different ways that they're incorporating the students and not just being cognizant is mind-blowing, like, it really speaks to the experience of student building that these guys do. It's great.
I think we're very fortunate with outstanding construction, too, from Leftfield to J.C.J. to Fontaine, very, very fortunate, so. So that is the MSBA update, Mr. Chair.
And I'll just add to that, this has been 12 years in the making, 13 years in the making, and to actually walk through it and see it, and to have been part of nine of the 10 SOIs that were submitted, it's awesome. And again, thank you to the community for supporting this project. All right, teaching and learning update.
We'd have no teaching and learning update tonight, Mr. Woodlock is not with us, so we'll go right into 10A.
All right, 10A. Superintendent evaluation. As a committee, we looked at Dr. Flanagan's review. As a group, we have given Dr. Flanagan exemplary across the board, his three goals. Student learning goal, professional practice goal, and his, the professional, or practice goals, but the middle school was a big part of this and how great he's done. So, and his three goals, exemplary, overall exemplary, we appreciate you very much, we thank you for everything you do for our students, for making it very easy for this group to meet and to participate in the overall school. So, we appreciate that very much, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to add that I did have the opportunity to go through the entire evaluation, every rating on each key action, and certainly your input, I really appreciate it. There was some great insight in there, great feedback in there, and I will continue to work hard to improve. I just want to thank this committee for being as supportive as you are. I think, you know, we're fortunate that we're all working for the same common goal, and I think the fact that we have outstanding communication really helps me do my job as effectively as possible. That being said, I don't do my job alone, and the team I have in central office and the administration is across the district, and more importantly, teaches in the classroom. They come to work every single day and work hard for our kids in this community, and I'm so proud to be a part of that. So, thank you for this evaluation, it's truly reflective of every one of the Tingsboro Public School districts, and I really appreciate that, so thank you all very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. As part of that evaluation, there was also a contract language revision, entered into Mass General Law verbiage into his contract, so I do need to seek a motion to authorize the Chair to sign a revised three-year contract agreement with Dr. Flanagan that will update language and have no financial impact on the district for the duration of the contract.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make that motion as stated.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? That carries 7-0-0. Thank you, everyone. At this time, we're going to turn it over to Mr. Masina for a food service contract amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, per the DESI regulations, food service contracts are issued as a one-year agreement with up to four one-year contract amendments. Last year, DESI came out with a very prescribed process where they actually had a bid template all designed, we just plug in our information, and that was how we issued out the bid, much different from the past where each district created their own and had to make sure we had specific DESI and USDA contract language. Made it much easier on our part, and certainly an easier process. Similar to that, this year, since we're in year two of their process, they came out with a very prescribed amendment process, offering us the first of our four one-year amendments. Plug in some information, the draft contract is created for signatures, and all of the language is where it needs to be. So, this upcoming school year is actually the first of the one-year amendments, and based upon my working with Whitsons over these past number of years, they continue to provide excellent food service operations for our kids, seamlessly brought in breakfast this year, which I have some numbers for you and other finance when we get to that, and I would recommend that we approve the amendment for the 24-25 school year, and that motion would authorize the Chair to sign the agreement.
I'll seek a motion to approve the 2024-2025 food service contract amendment number one of a possible four with Whitson, New England, and to authorize the Chair to sign any and all related documents.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? That carries 7-0-0. Before we move on to finance, Mr. Masina, I do need to seek a motion to approve Dr. Flanagan's 2023-2024 evaluation as presented. I did skip that.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? That carries 7-0-0.
Mr. Chair, also before we move on, I apologize for the scribners that are here. We had posted to appoint another member to the negotiating team at a June 3 meeting, but given the fact that we weren't meeting immediately after, we scratched it and said put it on this time, it was an oversight of my part, I apologize for that.
Yep.
But we do need another member of the negotiation team, so if we could seek a motion for a member to step up and serve in that capacity, that would be great.
Can I seek a motion and make a nomination at the same time? Can I make a nomination as Chair?
I'll nominate Mr. Mullen.
So I'll seek a motion for a nomination to join the negotiation committee.
I'll nominate Rob Mullen.
Second.
Any other nominations? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? That carries 7-0-0.
He didn't ask me if I'd accept it.
Oh.
We didn't care.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Mullen, for stepping up. We appreciate it.
It's a pleasure to serve.
Excellent, thank you. Finance, back to Mr. Masina.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, for signing of bills tonight, there are 10 bill warrants going around the table. As always, in your drive is a list of warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts. Also, as your single signer, Mr. Mullen did come into the office on May 28th and approved 13 bill warrants, and again, that list of numbers, accounts, and amounts are in your drive. For signing of payroll, since our last meeting discussion, there are four payroll dates listed in your drive, the payrolls of May 6th, May 20th, and June 3rd, as well as a June 10th payroll date, which, if you do see the number in the drive, it's a pretty stunning number at just over 2.5 million, but that is actually how the teacher's summer pays are structured, where, because we need to close out this fiscal year, the teachers are essentially given their July and August checks going out the door on Friday. Nobody gets a physical check anymore, but their direct deposits are into their banks by Friday, and that represents five pay dates for the teachers. So that's why you'll see that number in there. Also in your drive is the May 2024 financial package, which as always includes the current school committee budget at the end of May, the list of revolving account balances at the end of May, as well as the student account balances as of May 31st. And I'll leave the June 1 enrollment to the Chair.
June 1 enrollment. Elementary school is 765, middle school 372, high school 419, out of District 24, for a total of 1,580 students.
And if I could, Mr. Chair, just to indulge me in where we are with our breakfast program, as you know, we started the free-to-the-students breakfast program on September 11th, so roughly 167 days of serving as of last Friday. About 64,300 breakfasts have been served, which an average day is about 385 across the district, which based upon that June 1 enrollment that you just read is about 25% of our students that are having breakfast, which I'm very pleased by that number, I know we've tried it on a trial basis a number of times with very little success, so sort of challenging Whitsons to try to get a little more menu variety going into next school year, and maybe we can get that number closer to 30. I do have Whitsons most likely scheduled to come in because breakfast and lunch are both free next year. We don't really have them in like we used to to discuss budget and prior to the approval, but I did indicate to them that we'd like to have them in the fall to talk about operations and, you know, some of the things you may want to do. We actually have a new district manager that just started with us two months ago, so she will most likely be the one to come in with Tracy and just discuss some of the things we're seeing and where we want to go for this year. That's it for finance.
And if we transition the middle school in late April or early May to finish the year, they would be part of that transition as well?
Yes.
As far as, yeah.
We'll make sure of it.
Right.
We'll get the kids fed, for sure.
Awesome.
Great question, sir.
What, no, it was more of a, have we thought about having that discussion with him, but I'm assuming you did. Other? No other? School committee discussion? We'll start with my friend Evan.
No.
No. Thank you.
I would just like to say thank you to the committee for appointing me, as well as the select board. Congratulations to the offices and Rob, Stacy, Tony, on your reelections and elections. I'm enthusiastically looking to work with all of you this year, particularly, it's nice to see the middle school's going to get open next year, which is great. And to the seniors, congratulations, it was a great graduation. I think my last one was maybe 11 years ago, and to be honest, as I was sitting there, I was thinking, boy, I really miss celebrations like this of our students' achievement and reflection back on the community, so best of luck to them.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to recognize Dr. Flanagan, and thank you for another great year of service. Our community is really lucky to have you as our leader, you know, somebody who's so invested in this community, I'm not trying to embarrass you. But, you know, the things that Dr. Flanagan does behind the scenes that, you know, we may not even always call out, but, you know, he sits on the Board of Valley Collaborative, he represents with our state legislature, he does countless things for our middle school building project and so much more that we're not mentioning. These things benefit our students. Dr. Flanagan also surrounds himself with an amazing staff of, you know, admin team and an amazing staff of teachers and support staff, so thank you for all of that work. Our community is really lucky to have you and very appreciative to have you. I'd also like to congratulate the staff for another great year and our students for another great year, and wish everybody a happy and safe summer.
Mr. Masina?
Happy summer to the students and staff, for sure.
Mr. Mullen?
I'd like to thank the community for supporting us, both of us, and supporting Stacy in our election bids, greatly appreciated that very much. Like to thank Michelle Riley, our head nurse, who's retiring. She not only was the head nurse for the school department, she was a longtime board member from the health department as well. Played a pivotal role in guiding the schools in this town through the COVID, and her knowledge and her dedication to this town will definitely be missed. And I think that's probably it. I hope everyone has a great summer.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank the community for giving me this opportunity to join the school committee, and I look forward to working with everyone and being able to serve the school district. I also hope everyone has a wonderful summer. Thank you to the teachers and staff for giving our kids another wonderful year.
Welcome, Stacy and Bert, looking forward to working with both of you for the next year. Thank you to Michelle Riley, you know, like Rob said, she was very heavily invested during COVID, I spent a lot of time talking to her during that time, it was.
Every week.
It's a wild time, so it's going to be a loss, but I wish her the best moving forward. forward. Thank you to Chris Pollitt for his years of service, um, I wish him best of luck in his next chapter. Echo Becky's thoughts, I'm not going to go all mushy like she did, but, you know, you, you do a great job, Mike. The, the, the town and the district is, you know, much better off for all the work that you put in, and we are truly grateful. I want to thank all the teachers, admin, students for another successful year, and I hope they all enjoy the summer, and good luck to the girls softball team tomorrow as they try to win another state championship. It's a special team, we have six seniors that'll be moving on after this year, so hopefully they can finish strong and win another one. If you're around tomorrow, come out to Worcester State at four o'clock.
Um, let's see, what can I do that nobody else has talked about yet? I'm going to echo what Ryan said, Dr. Flanagan, and I also won't, you know, embarrass you, turn you the color of your shirt too much, but the district is very lucky to have you, and thank you for another great year across the board. Good luck to the girls softball team, uh, states is no joke and way to go, keep going. I want to take a quick minute, two of the resignations in this week's list hit kind of close to home for me because without Steve Stanley and Jennifer Farmping, I don't know that my son would have had the year that he did, um, and so good luck in your future endeavors, and thank you so much to the TES staff for the last eight years, um, and what a great moving on ceremony this morning, so, um, I hope everybody has a great summer, seniors, don't party too hard, get, keep that energy for the fall and whatever your next chapter looks like, so, um, that's it.
So two great ceremonies the past week, graduation in grade five today was, was just awesome, and the, the grade five speeches with the paper airplane, phenomenal, I love that. Certainly good luck to our softball team, uh, Wednesday, love to see another banner in the gym, so good luck, girls. One of the things I wanted to reiterate, and we spoke about it earlier, was, uh, Ms. Shepherd did a phenomenal job as a first-year teacher running field day at the elementary school, she had never done it before, and it went off without a hitch, and it was absolutely phenomenal, so for a first-year teacher to step up and take on that huge of a project, uh, Ms. Shepherd, thank you for your efforts. To all the teachers, paraprofessionals, admin assistants, custodians, maintenance workers, everyone in the district, thank you so much for a phenomenal year, and the administrators, um, thank you so much for a phenomenal year, um, I, I look forward to a, a strong finish over these next couple of days, I hope everyone has a great, safe, happy, calm, relaxing, restful summer, and comes back next year ready to do it again, so, um, thanks to everyone.
That's it. I'll echo everyone's comments in regards to you, as far as I'm going to go with that.
Perfect.
Evan, great job tonight, it was your first night tonight as our, uh, student representative, so great job, well-prepared. You did awesome. Look forward to working with you, I don't know if you show up during the summer, we usually don't have the students show up during the summer meetings, but, um, look forward to meeting with you all next year. Great job at graduation the other night, so you played a, a role in that as well. To Mr. Ogden and everybody, thank you as a parent of a senior who graduated, it was a great graduation. Thank you to Danielle for stepping in for me and, um, opening the ceremony for me, so I could just be a parent for that event. Good luck at all the moving up ceremonies and everything else we got going on. Mr. Messina, just another great year for you and for the budget, we appreciate that.
Keep swinging.
That is all I have, uh, this evening, but, uh, have a safe, healthy summer, and we'll see you all in the fall. We do have a need for executive session this evening to discuss the strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting, uh, may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body as declared by the chair, we will return from executive session only to adjourn the regular session meeting. I am seeking a motion to enter into executive session and remind everyone that this will require a roll call vote.
So moved.
Second.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
Good night all, and have a great summer, kids.